I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome everyone for coming. Are we at T minus nine days about? Does that sound right? Okay. Um, roll call, Mr. Lombard.
Column.
Yes.
Odie.
Yep.
Clumper.
Yes.
Saxor.
Yes.
Schrader.
Yes.
All right. With that, if there are no changes in the agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve that as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Conflict of interest disclosure waiver requests, there are none this evening. That takes us to approval of the minutes from our regular meeting on July 16th. If there are no questions, changes, deletions, additions, I would entertain a motion to approve that as presented. So moved. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. I don't believe I see anyone out there for community input tonight, so that takes us to our next item, financial items, bills and claims. Mr. Lombard.
Any questions from the board? Quite a list of invoices that we presented to you this month, being the beginning of the year. I just had a couple noted on page two. The City of Brandon School Resource Officer, that's the second half of 1718. So you'll see another one coming forward. I think they bill in December and June, so that's last year though. Uh, page three, in the middle, Brandon Valley Self-Funding Account, HRA Contribution, that's our self-funding of our deductible and out-of-pocket maximums. We fund that internally. We pay half of the deductible and half of the out-of-pocket maximum for our employees on a yearly basis. Might be all I had noted. Page eight, I did show the replacement air conditioner. That's a non-budgeted item in the central office of $20,000. So that'll come out of our contingency funds in the capital outlay. Page 10, Mid-American Golf and Landscape, $628,000. We'll have $200,000 left on the turf project of $1 million. Page 13, I did note on the work comp, First Dakota Indemnity. That is a change in companies this year. We went from Continental Western Group to Risk Administration Services. It's paid to First Dakota Indemnity Company. We were able to ascertain a 15 percent savings on our work comp, which amounted to $26,000 this year, so it's a total of $163,000. Total bills, $2,490,000. The advanced payments of $765,000 and $16,300 of food service bills. Or, I'm sorry, $16,300 of pay vouchers and $15,991 of food service bills. Any questions I could entertain for you guys?
If there are no questions for Mr. Lombard on the bills and claims, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented tonight.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Financial report, Mr. Lombard.
Okay. Real quickly, the cash report for the month of July, $10.5 million coming into the month, $2,444,000 of receipts, and $5,668,000 of dispersments, left $7.3 million at the end of the month. $6.783 million was in the general fund, $166,000 in the capital fund, $376,000 in the special education fund, $50,000 in the pension fund, a negative $65,000 in the bond redemption fund, and $58,000 in the enterprise fund. That $2,444,000 is itemized on the next two pages. An investment report of $1 million. And payroll and benefits summary of $1,446,000 drops down in the summertime with a number of teachers that elect to be paid over a 10-month period rather than a 12-month period, so that drops the payroll down quite a bit in the summer months. And lastly, the trust and agency statement of $111,000. Monies that we hold for others. That's all I have this month.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Lombard on the financial report at all? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the financial report as presented tonight.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. That takes us to our general business section. The first item we have is an oral report about the 2018 Summer Lunch and Reading Program.
Well, good evening, everybody. If you'll let me take one moment real quick, I do want to say a huge thank you to all of you for allowing me to serve in the current role I am with the National School Nutrition Association, also allowing our staff to go. It was amazing. I had an all-staff meeting, or all-managers meeting today, and they were so pumped about this school year. They're also talking about the school bus that I'm going to be hearing about some more about next year, that we're looking at retrofitting. The other thing is, I'm just truly honored that you guys are so supportive. This is the first time in many years we've had somebody from a small district. And what do you do when you get a case of 100 and some magazines with your face on the cover of it? You hand it out to people. So if I may, can I just pass a few around?
And also, some of the offices upgraded last week, so I did have some back table. And if you want to pot them off, because I don't have 100 prints to give them to.
They're all our kids, though. It's really cool that we have pictures of that and took care of that. They had to fly in a photographer from Washington DC because they didn't think we had them here in South Dakota. But anyhow, really excited to share this about the summer lunch program and the reading program. Don't want to miss that at all. So talking about that, just sharing, we started out with 43 days. This year, we were up one day over last year, and you can see the total by the numbers. We actually had an increase of about, I'm trying to see my little print here, 11 percent in students eating with us. We actually had a 40 percent increase of adults eating with us, so we served a lot more adults. And the information that came through with that is we found a lot of parents wanted to come and see what their kids were eating. So I think that's a benefit for us because it also lets families know what we're actually serving kids. We're replicating what our regular meals are. We did have an increase in staff meals. My staff do get a free meal when they work, and with that, while it was an increase, because I, instead of staffing four people last year, I did five this year because we went to, using our dish machine, and got rid of some disposable trays for the benefit of Thai. How's that? And many other reasons. So it was really neat to see that we had a total increase. We served 13,644 meals, and it was overall about a 12 percent increase, which was exciting to see. And we had all good comments on what was going on there. So by the numbers, just sharing a little bit, our total federal reimbursement that we will have finished off once we get that last payment in here in the middle of the month, it'll be $50,000, just $50,500 and some odd dollars there, as I took just the labor that I know without any, if there's any benefit time or anything extra that goes in there with what Paul figures in, my actual labor hours and all that, total labor is $13,615, and my total food and supply cost was up to $18,142. We ended up with a net gain again this year of $18,747. We had a gain last year. It's just a little bit shy of what we were at last year. I realize we had increased meals, but then with the increased staffing, and some of my food costs were a little bit higher. On the next slide, it talks about just the average food and supply cost per meal, and I love that. I love the numbers. And so our food cost was $1.33 a meal, and then we tried to figure out how to put $1.33 together in a meal, and we were showing, I think Dr. Larson was there one day saying, "Wow, that's a lot of food," because we offer two fruits and two vegetables and all that. And so they still had a lot of options there, but at $1.33, that's what it averaged out to. Average labor is a dollar, so our average total cost per meal was at $2.33. And along with that, our federal reimbursement went up by about nine cents this year over what last year's reimbursement was. Summer meal reimbursements are much higher than what the school year reimbursement is. So it's by about, by almost 60 cents per meal, so for like over a free. So with that said, number of reduced meals, it would cover, $18,747 would cover about $48,868 meals, down to the numbers there, or 275 students. I know you're pondering something later on in the meeting here. Last year, we actually had 278 students in the district that were on reduced meals, and we had an average participation of about 84 percent of our reduced students. I want to see that number grow because I think if we waived that cost last year, we should have had in the high 90s, and I really want to promote that a little bit more this year with your approval tonight on waiving that fee. And on the next slide, just a record day, I wanted to hit 400 this year. Our record day was 495. So then, like, that was early on in July, or June, and I'm thinking, now we gotta go for 500. Well, we didn't top five, but 495 meals, pumping it out that fast was pretty amazing. And we had crowded lunchroom, had full tables. Mr. Harst was there a few times, got to see that. Actually, Mr. Schleckaway came in and ate a few meals with us too, and got to see that. But it was really neat to see that we had a lot of full tables and a lot of busy days. And Wednesdays happened to be a busy day because of the summer reading program, which definitely made an impact on our numbers. And Dr. Larson, I think you might want to talk to this one.
So just a quick recap on the summer reading program. We had over 400 books circulated out of the Brandon Elementary Library. We guessed approximately 160 participants came on our Wednesdays throughout the course of the summer, and then we had 125 children meet or exceed the summer reading goal that was established in alignment to the Sioux Land Library Summer Reading Program, which the feedback Sioux Land Library provided was, that's a great increase in previous years, from previous years. So they saw an increase in their reading program as well. So the other item that I would really note is it was a positive program or opportunity for our summer academic programs. I'd speak specifically to our EL summer program. Those kiddos were not only able to go to the summer lunch program, but on Wednesdays, they came in for the read aloud and the ability to check out additional books. So our library at Brandon Elementary was open for, you know, approximately an hour and a half once a week, and it produced our intended results. May have a tweak or two moving forward, but overall, it was a positive program.
So basically, any questions you would have of the summer lunch program? I feel it was a success. We didn't have complaints, which was great. I'm always open to listening to new ideas that we could offer and all that, but any comments or questions?
Just a question. How long has that program across the United States been going on, gaining? I'm just curious.
You know, it's probably been around for maybe 25, 30 years, to be honest with you, and it kind of took some time for me to find out about it.
So I would just note a couple of items. Number one, our recommendation is to eliminate the reduced fee, the 40 cents for meals for this year. And then in addition to that, I wanted to note that we are currently evaluating how to expand and enhance our summer lunch program. And when I say expand and enhance, what I'm talking about is outreach to areas and children that are in need. And we may look at doing that via a mobile feeding unit. You can retrofit a school bus to provide meals, outreach meals within your community to, like I said, those highest need areas. Naturally, Brandon Elementary qualifies, so this will stay our home base, but then we'll be able to reach out to the wide corners of our school district, whether it be Valley Springs, whether it be some other residential areas that have high need on the west or the south or the north ends of our school district, as we're a relatively large geographic location. Got a tentative timeline and plan put together, but we will be bringing something more formalized to you here in the coming months. So that's one idea we were able to take away from our trip to Las Vegas in the national convention. So I would turn it back over to Director Anderson if she wants to add any.
With that said, I'm going to have to go back to the three experts that sat in on the breakouts because I wasn't able to attend any. They happen to be in this room because they know a lot more about a summer bus and a feeding bus than I do, and I also have some people across the country, though, that I can reach out to and talk with. And I'd be really interested because it's kind of nice to have something offered up to me where I don't have to ask for it or beg for it. And people are saying, "Hey, we've got a great idea, a great opportunity where we could do some more summer meals for those definitely in need," and include that with the reading, because I know we discussed a little bit about that. So anyhow, thank you.
I just, thank you for handing this out. I wanted to say how fortunate we are to have you represent not just the Brandon Valley School District, but for South Dakota across the nation and your position. I was able to see gay in action this last week at the Associate School Board meeting, and just the way that you spoke very eloquently. You have so many great ideas that you're already sharing, but we get to have those locally grown here, and you share them first and foremost in how you're benefiting the kids. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And by the way, page six is my column. It's the monthly column, and page 18 starts the big profile. So not that I've worked it, but and you can throw darts whatever you want from there, but thanks.
Thank you very much. That takes us to administration reports. Administrative Center Superintendent Larson.
Yes, thank you, Adam Chair. Real quick, construction update, outdoor stadium. The synthetic turf is in. I do believe we held practice. Right now, they're on there. So when this meeting's over, I'll certainly open up a gate. Maybe it's already open. We can wander up into the bleachers and talk about how the center logo is perfectly positioned. I would note that that was Mr. Marso's expertise fielding on that. So with that, our final walkthrough is scheduled for the 15th, and our first event is Monday, August 20th, Marching in Melon Madness. Certainly invite the public to join us for that event. And then our first athletic event is Tuesday, August 21st. We will host girls soccer. So few loose ends to wrap up on that project, but all in all, it is completed for the most part. Brandon Valley High School Classroom remodel and renovation, finish work continues. You will know we're approving one change order for $21,000, wet pipe sprinkler system in the elevator that brings that up to code, an ADA door in the technology space, some music classroom ceiling height change, and then some miscellaneous stuff with some drywall tape texture. When we tore the walls apart and buildings apart, there's some utilities in a few places that required some additional drywall tape texture. So anytime you have a remodel or a renovation, you get into some unforeseen, so we're very comfortable with the change order, the amount, moving forward. We do have some teachers moving into their classroom spaces and beginning that process of getting that ready, and we look forward to that being done here in the near future. We've accepted substantial completion. Don't anticipate it being any bit of a problem with the start of school. So that project continues. With note, our Facility Review Committee will begin the fall of 2018. I've asked our board members to provide us with, provide me with two individuals to participate. If you have not done so, please do so, as we are going to finalize our schedule and whatnot. That group will develop non-binding facility recommendations and also develop a 20-year growth vision. I anticipate that being to you in November or December, as far as a report goes, that we can plot our navigation forward. I want to provide a quick update, and I don't have a lot of information at this point in time. I'm still scheduling meetings regarding this topic, but Stand Up for School Safety is a project that was recently announced by South Dakota Department of Criminal Investigation in conjunction with the South Dakota Chief of Police and Sheriff's Association. Ultimately, what it is, it's an anonymous reporting platform via text message regarding suspicious behavior, threats, violence. So we will continue to collaborate with our law enforcement, continue to build that positive collaborative relationship. And I spoke with our School Resource Officer today. Sioux Falls Police Department will be later this week, and also the Minnehaw County Sheriff, because it's important to remember that as our district covers a large geographic location in the southeastern part of South Dakota, we have multiple law enforcement agencies that have jurisdiction depending on which school building we are talking about. So that's just an item to note. That will be made available to all of our kids, our patrons, et cetera. We'll have some posters and some visual displays that explain Stand Up for School Safety and that project. So this is one item to note. Giant thank you regarding our Transportation Department. A giant thank you to our parents and guardians. Ladies and gentlemen, we sold over 1,100 bus passes prior to the deadline, and I can't tell you how critical it is that that happens prior to the deadline. Trying to route about 2,000 kiddos takes substantial planning and preparation, so we need a couple of weeks to get from the bus passes being sold and then those outside of the five miles that don't have to buy bus passes routed. So we've worked very hard. Our Transportation Department held multiple open houses, et cetera, to give parents and guardians the opportunity to get that taken care of prior to the deadline. It's approximately 200 more than we sold last year. So all in all, nice turnout, but a giant thank you to our parents and guardians for their timely cooperation and a job well done by our Transportation Department for facilitating that process. 16th of August, we'll have new staff back. 20th and 21st, we'll have our new staff, our all-staff, or our Staff in Service and Workshop. I would remind the board on August 21st, all-staff welcome back at 10:30 a.m., and then we will provide a lunch shortly thereafter, approximately 11 a.m., and then we'll have our all-staff photo at noon. We're going to try something new and different this year at the all-staff photo. Hopefully, it turns into a bit of a treat. We'll see how it all works out, but I encourage you to attend and join us for that celebration. August 22nd, first day of school for students, and we will not have school on September 3rd due to Labor Day. I would certainly field any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Larson. Mr. Lombard, anything additional tonight? Okay, thank you. High school, Dr. Talcott? Thank you. Mr. Schleckaway, anything tonight? Middle school, Mr. Thorson.
I don't know how else to say it, but it's go time at the middle school right now, to be honest with you. We could start today, and we've had several kids in today, because you know what the biggest worry is of seventh graders? Their locker, their locker combination. That is their biggest worry. And I tell parents, I guarantee after day three, it will be taken care of. You know, it just takes them a couple of tries, and next thing you know, they got it, and they're in a routine. But they worry and worry, and I don't think they sleep and whatever. But our building's open. We've had several kids and their parents in just to make sure they know where their classes are and if they can get their locker open. So it has been busy, and it will pick up as the week goes on. The main reason why I'm here, and first of all, I want to thank the Board of Education for allowing us to go to one-on-one. Mr. Freckin and I, along with our computer staff, Kurt Valomic and Chris Jones, have worked all summer, basically in and out, trying to get this process right and correct so we can roll it out as efficient as possible. And I just want to go through the process, just so you know what it looks like. We will start with parent and student meetings this Thursday. We have them scheduled from 6:00 to 7:00, and then there's a half-hour break because hopefully we're going to take care of most of that paperwork, okay? And then we're going to start another session from 7:30 to 8:30, and hopefully by 9:00, we can get paperwork done for those parents and those students who show up on Thursday night. We've also scheduled a second one because we have found out there's so many conflicts, and it was very difficult to find a night. We are going to do it right before open house, and I know that conflicts with next open house, but what we tell them is, "Go open house," and we are going to tape our sessions, and if you need to come in, and we will meet with you one-on-one. All right? So we are offering parents several different options to come in. Several parents have been through. It's very similar to what the high school has gone through, so there are parents very comfortable with the way that it's going. But just so you know, that's what we have slated right now. We will do student orientation the first three days of school. In other words, we may do some whole group things by grade level. We may do some individual class orientation, just to give them, I don't want to overload them with information and keep throwing things at them, so we would give them little bits and pieces throughout those first three days, so they have a handle on the do's, the don'ts, our expectations, those types of things. And each family will get a packet. We're also going to post it online, that sort of thing. So a credit to the high school. They have helped us out tremendously with that packet, so I thank those two guys for helping us out there. Just so you know what it looks like, this is what our computer and our packet looks like. So the computer that they're getting is an HP ProBook X360, and it's a very nice, very nice computer. It's very durable. Not saying that middle school kids are going to be a little rough with it and things like that, but I think it's as durable a lot as we could get, to be quite honest with you. It's very similar to any laptop that you see. You can also turn on and use it as a tablet. So if kids want to use it to take notes, you know, that sort of thing, they are given that opportunity. I would give my computer staff all the credit on this. They are the ones who chose this bag. They let me view it, and I said, "Go for it." So each student will get a bag, just like this. It's got the Brandon Valley logo on it, which is really nice. On the back, there's a place for name and information. There's no confidential information. We just give them the name and some information, but there's nothing confidential on this. So this is what they get. It fits in their locker both directions. Thank goodness. So, you know, in the winter, when it's a heavy coat, they can stick this in here. Their coats can go in front. It would be a nice situation. So these are very durable. They are very, very durable. So again, I appreciate our computer staff doing a nice job of ordering those things. The rollout will happen the second week of school to these students. So we will give them orientation the first three days. Our anticipated date is either going to be August 26th or 27th. That's Monday or Tuesday, depending on how our orientation goes, if we have everything covered. But we would like to get them in those student hands on the 27th or the 28th. Students are free to bring them home. You know, we will really stress the accountability piece. It's like I tell most parents, if you put a cellphone in their hands, they think it's a million dollars, and they're going to guard that thing. Hopefully, the same thing is going to happen here, and I truly believe it will. So we know that there'll be ups and downs, and there'll be some things to it we're going to have to deal with, but it would be a great teaching tool, people, and that's what it's all about. It is another tool that we can put in not only our teachers, but our kids' hands, and give them another chance to learn in different ways. So I want to thank you. I will keep you updated as the year goes on, obviously. You are more than welcome to come in at any time. Our teachers have been offered the opportunity to get theirs already. Most of them have, just for an opportunity to experience with them and that sort of thing. And we have several that are very excited about some things that they are doing. They're already networking out, reaching out to others, so I think it'll be a really, really good thing. So I just want to give you my thanks, and again, I think it's good for our district. Questions?
I just had a quick comment.
Sure.
So first, I just want to thank you and your team for getting all this going.
Yep.
And then specifically, I just want to thank you for allowing them to take their device home, which I think is a really big game changer. So I appreciate that.
And the computer staff, they're all loaded in there. They're ready to go. So it's just when we decide to do that, we will hand them out to the kids, and we will let the parents know when we do that. But we're actually ready to go. It's just, we got to get through that orientation and the paperwork and the insurance part of it, and we'll be ready to go.
I would encourage the board on your way out the door, before you leave, grab the bag, pick it up, take the computer out. I was so impressed. I ran over when I heard that they were ready and done. I think I went into Principal Thorson's office. I either gave him a high- Thorson's office, I either gave him a high five or a hug, I don't know which one, but I was so impressed at the package that was put together. So hats off to Principal Thorson, Principal Freckin, and the tech staff. It really came together very, very nicely.
Thank you.
Brad, I got one question. Or maybe it's not for Brad, but for the high school one-on-one, do we have a canvas bag like that?
Yes, we have.
We do? Okay. Is it held?
They're expected to carry their computers in their bags, and if something were to happen, the computer would have to come down. See, I just want you? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Freckin, anything tonight? Okay. Mr. Skipstead? Okay. Mr. Bab? All right. Mrs. Hoffcamp, anything? Mr. Horst? Mrs. Palmer? No? All right. Mrs. Nelson? Anything? Mr. Henshaw?
Hi.
Mr. Marson?
Sure.
Of course. And I know we're going to see it.
At the field? No, he talked about that. Much unlike these guys and gals, we're already fully engaged in our seasons. We've had contests already, soccer contests. Just added up roughly today, we have about five hundred and thirty-two high school students already involved, from marching band to all of the sporting activities that we have. That's about forty-five staff members and five hundred and thirty-two kids. So almost half of our high school kids are involved in something this fall and have been practicing for, some of them, the third week already. So kind of a good number, when we can say that that many kids are participating. Any questions on activities or anything? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. That takes us to board policy, and we have one that we need to adopt tonight. EJ?
Yes, so Madam Chair, EJ, our service animal policy. First reading was held last month. There have been no changes to the first reading. It would certainly be our recommendation to adopt the policy this evening, as it is necessary that we get it adopted prior to the start of the school year. Would certainly field any questions you may have.
Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt EJ as presented tonight.
So moved.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. General business, consent items number one through seven, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented tonight, please. So moved. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. There's only a couple, numbers one through twenty-three, on the personnel consent. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented tonight, please.
Move to approve personnel items one through twenty-three.
So moved.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. There are seven items under the information only regarding some transfers and assignments for your information. Under Communications Central Office, there are some building permits for you to look at, and there is also a thank you note for your review. That takes us to board reports, formal reports. Does anyone have one tonight that they would like to present? All right. Hearing none, there are three travel reports there for your review. And with that, that looks like it takes us to the end of our scheduled meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.